Each day became a blur of Zoom tours and digital contracts. Omna and Drew found themselves bidding on anything that looked remotely acceptable. By the spring, Omna and Drew had bid on 15 homes and hadn't gotten a single one.
We were starting to panic a little bit.
Drew had signed a contract to start his new job in Austin in May, and they'd already given up their place in Brooklyn. So Omna started asking their Realtor about rentals.
How many rentals did you apply to? It was four or five. Did you get any of them? No. No.
The chaos of the housing market had also bled into the rental market, and so it seemed like they had run out of options. Until, a couple days later, Omna was going through her nightly routine of trawling the housing website Trulia.
So there's like an extra tab that you have to click on in order to see the for sale by owner.
And there was this one house listed that caught her and Drew's attention. At 1,200 square feet, it was just about the same size as their place in Brooklyn. So they toured it over FaceTime.
One of the things that we were so attracted to is the backyard is really big. And so we were thinking like, oh, this is gonna be perfect. Like, we can build another little, like, you know, studio which we can rent out or we can use as a home office or like a home.
At $525,000, it was priced a little more than the other homes in the area, but they bid $50,000 over right off the bat, maxing out their budget. They cut their option period to five days and partially waived their right to an appraisal. And when they heard back from the Realtor.
Our real estate agent called us and was like, I think maybe it's looking good. And we're like, why do you say that? He was like, because the guy is asking whether or not you will water and harvest the potatoes in their backyard for them once you close and then share the potato harvest with them.
The sellers, who owned an empanada company and had planted their own potato patch in the backyard, couldn't bear the thought of missing out on the crop. And so they asked Drew and Omna to continue watering it in exchange for splitting the harvest with them.
And we were like, we will take a potato cultivating class if that's what he wants.
Till last July, more than half a year after their search first began, I flew down to Austin to visit Omna and Drew at their new home. Oh, my God. We're in the construction zone. So we're like in the middle of doing stuff. They hadn't moved in yet because they were renovating the kitchen and bathroom. Edie, their daughter, had her own room, and there was a guest room for Omna's parents to come visit and for Omna to use as a home office. I can take you out to the backyard. Yeah. If you wanna like take a walk around. Admire it. Yeah, and then that's just. Omna also took me out into the backyard. And it really was a beautiful space. Um, so yeah, so this is the huge backyard. But there was also a catch. During inspection, Omna and Drew found out that the house had been recently listed as being on a flood plain. So not only did that mean that they had to pay monthly flood insurance to FEMA, but they couldn't build anything in the backyard. It's been a year since Omna and Drew bought their house. Since then, the housing market has cooled down a little. After the Fed began raising interest rates in March to combat inflation, mortgage rates finally went up again. They now stand at around 5.78%, the highest level since the 2008 recession. But at the same time, home prices are also higher than ever. According to Redfin, the median U.S. home price is up 43% since March of 2020. In Austin, it's up by 66%. And the median mortgage payment for an American family is now at an all-time high of more than $2,500. It's still too early to know exactly how all of this is going to impact the housing market. There's still very limited supply and a ton of demand, especially for millennials. Many people who can't afford to buy are turning to renting. And asking rents nationwide are now up 15% from last year. So what might happen is that despite the high mortgage rates, for a lot of people, buying still may be their best option. Given all of that, I decided to call Omna and Drew back one more time to see how they're feeling about their purchase and whether they have any regrets.
Hmm, I don't know. Like, I still think that we overpaid. I know that we overpaid. But then you have to think about it as like, alright, well, it's the real estate. But like, there are so many stories out there of people having nightmarish experiences that have, you know, I think there were Reddit forums where people had put in like 30 offers or 40 offers, like, and still haven't gotten a house. And there's a lot of people that can't afford to even go through this process at all. And like, that's tragic in itself.
I also feel like for my sanity and being able to sleep at night, like, you have to say that it's a success.
But given how much home prices increased last year and that buying is even more expensive now, they're hoping that it was all worth it. By some estimates, the value of their house has already gone up by more than $100,000 since they bought it.
Francesca Mari is a contributing writer to The New York Times Magazine.
The Daily is supported by Aspiration, helping offset climate change by planting a tree with every swipe of the Aspiration debit card. To date, Aspiration has funded the planting of 75 million trees. aspiration.com, Aspiration LLC. And by Fidelity Wealth Management, helping create plans for a client's full financial picture. fidelity.com/wealth. Investment minimums apply. Fidelity Brokerage Services, LLC. Distribution of The Daily is made possible by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily by going to nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Sabrina Tavernise. See you tomorrow.
Radio IQ is supported by Mark Nelson and Virginia Wills Trusts and Estates.
The Rebel City Council Session for June 21st, 2022 at 7 o'clock is hereby called to order. And I'll ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Beszich.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here, in a quorum, Mr. President. I'll be doing double duty tonight. I will lead you in the invocation. And following that, I'll catch my breath and we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. So that's everybody to stand. Let us pray. Eternal Father, our Father, we come to you at this time asking you first and foremost to bless us and guide us as we go about the business of this city. We ask you to instill in us integrity and honesty that citizens respect and that pleases you. Lord, and we thank you for all that you continue to do. We thank you for this opportunity that we come here, recognizing that you woke us up today. And Lord, we give you praise, give you honor, and give you glory. And Lord, help us during this time that we live in, a time of tremendous polarization, a time where there's divisiveness, bitterness. And help us, Lord, to continue to let our light shine before you and the people that you see. We thank you, and we ask you now, as we go forth, as elected and appointed officials, to do the business of this valley. We thank you from the depths of our heart. And Lord, we ask you now to touch those in our city who are going through difficulties, the homeless, those who have death in their families, those who are in hospital rooms. Lord, we ask you for so much because you are such a giving God. And we love you and we praise you. It is in the high and holy name of your Son that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unadied, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to our second session of the day. And we're delighted to have you, those of you that are here in the chamber and those of you that may be watching on RV TV. Council meetings are or will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7 o'clock PM and Saturdays from 10 a.m. to 5 o'clock PM. You get to watch us all day on Saturday. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronocva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. Alright, the first thing on our agenda tonight is the public hearings. A request of Zachary Toof to vacate an approximately 12-foot-wide alley running east from Fourth Street Southwest, approximately 75 feet, to a dead end with an approximately total area of 910 square feet adjacent to property located at 210 Fourth Street Southwest. Zachary Toof is the owner and his spokesperson. There is one, there's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Oh, that's a clerk to please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance permanently vacating, discontinuing, and closing a 12-feet-wide alley running east from Fourth Street Southwest, approximately 75 feet to a dead end located at 210 Fourth Street Southwest. Official tax map number 1010822, as more particularly described here and after, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Alright, it must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval for this item. And at this time, Zachary, are you here? Mr. Toof, the spokesperson?
I do not seem here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Alright, well, what we'll do is open the public hearing. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
No, sir.
Alright. Alright, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments by City Council? Alright, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call the roll, please.
Mr. Beszich.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And this item passes. Thank you for the ordinance passes. Alright, item number two is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to repeal the current fee compendium and re-adopt a new electronic fee compendium and to receive the views of citizens with regards to the fees set forth in the fee compendium involving the city's planning department, Timon Spencer, the city attorney. And there is one measure which is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Alright, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance repealing the City of Roanoke's current fee compendium, adopting an electronic City of Roanoke fee compendium, re-establishing certain fees, rates, penalties, and charges made by the city, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. I do recognize the city manager for any comments that he would have.
On the capital items, sorry.
Okay. Alright.
No, I'm sorry, that was city attorney's item. That's why you threw me off there, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, it's the same as the last time, but with council's action earlier this afternoon, repealing the false alarm. The one change that was anticipated and made is a false alarm fee has been removed from the fee compendium for the fire department. Otherwise, it's just as we presented it to council at the first meeting of the month.
Okay, thank you. Alright, with that being said, I will open a public hearing. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Alright, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments by members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call the roll.
Mr. Beszich.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Alright, item number three is a proposal of the City of Roanoke for authorization of general obligation public improvement bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed $48,120 million and appropriation of funds for capital projects. Robert S. Carroll Jr., the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we're gonna borrow that much money. It's $48,220,000.
Alright, $48,120,000.
Thousand.
Thousand. What did I say?
$120 million.
Okay.
Don't need quite that much.
I'll recognize the manager, city manager, for any comments.
Thank you. And just by way of explanation, this is just the public hearing. There's no action required. That's gonna come at a subsequent date as well. But we have to go through, start this process. There'll be also opportunity at action, obviously, for folks to weigh in if they choose to do so. But just to remind everyone, these are for the capital projects that have already been approved for the upcoming capital program. And I'm just gonna mention a few of these, just again, to remind you and others. So this includes the Morningside Elementary, new school, in new school construction replaced Preston Park. This is Phase 2, which will fund the construction part of the Wasina Bridge, as well as, this is inclusive of the beginning of the Washington Park Pool that we talked about earlier. So that will include the design part and some of the demolition work that will go on. It includes the stormwater, $4 million with the stormwater improvements, curb and gutter and sidewalk and maintenance improvements, fleet capital replacements, and some other technology components, as well as HVAC and structural projects in the city. So this is all the items that are in our capital program. I just wanna remind everyone, kind of, some of the projects that are on there as well. And again, this is the public hearing for this part. We'll be coming back at a subsequent meeting for the action at that time. Happy to answer any questions.
Alright, I'll open the public hearing. And are there any citizens wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk?
No.
Alright, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll go to council if they have any discussion or comments.
I just have a comment.
And my comment is, although there is no action to be taken, I think for public and for transparency going forward, if we should have any more such as this, to still have a report outlining what it is that the citizens would have been commenting on.
Sure. And again, when it comes back for action, there'll be the opportunity if anyone wants to actually speak.
Right, but for the public hearing's sake, I think it would have been appropriate.
Yeah, and the legal ad, it did identify all of those items.
Right, but I don't get a copy of the legal ad, and I don't know if it's out there.
I mean, that's how we notify the public.
Right, but I mean, if they were to look at the website, there would not be anything out there that would show them they were looking at the agenda. There wouldn't be anything there.
It wasn't on the agenda, certainly, no.
But I mean, just the title. But there was no outline of a report of anything that they would have looked at, such as what I have. I have nothing. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Alright, any further comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Actually, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Again, it's just the public hearing, no action.
Okay, alright, no actions being heard. Then we'll move on. Alright, a proposal of the City of Roanoke to consider an amendment to the aggregate amount of the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual budget in connection with appropriation of funds for the general fund and appropriation of funding from additional local taxes and other revenue estimates in the amount of $18,111,000.
Yes.
Alright, okay. A city manager, I guess is the spokesperson for this. And there is one measure, a budget ordinance. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to increase the transfers to Roanoke City Public Schools, operating expenditures for snow removal, public safety overtime, fire temp wages, Sheriff Medical Contract Children's Services Act, transfer to reserves for fund balance, inmate phone commissions, downtown district taxes, capital projects fund for carillon inspection and budget contingency to increase revenue budget estimates for local taxes and other revenues, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 general fund and capital projects fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna kind of set the stage here and then ask Amelia to give you a little bit more detail. This is customary at the end of the year. We're often rebalancing the budget because, obviously, revenues hopefully come in stronger than had projected, but occasionally come in weaker. In this case, came in significantly stronger in a couple of areas that you're familiar with and that we'll talk about. And we rebalance that against expenditures, which also, in some instances, such as those that were listed overtime and other kinds of things, came in higher than what was expected. What makes this year a bit different, as you all are well aware, obviously, is the amount of the increase of revenue was substantially higher than had been anticipated in the budget, part of which, a significant part of which, is due to the personal property tax. So personal property tax discussion is embedded in this discussion. There's obviously more to it. So I'm gonna have Amelia kind of walk through sort of the bigger picture, and then we'll really narrow down into the, well, then you can have the public hearing, and we'll narrow down into the personal property. Or we can narrow down into personal property, and then you can have the public hearing. I'll leave that kind of up to you. But you'll see that as we go through this presentation. And it's not, it's just a couple of slides, just to sort of let you know, again, what's reflected in the documents you have, but so that folks can view those as well. Amelia?
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor, and council members, good evening. And as Bob indicated, I want to just walk you through a little more detail regarding the adjustments that are pertaining to what council is being asked to consider. The first slide here just itemizes each of those local taxes that are referenced, that were referenced in the advertisement that was in the newspaper, as well as the report which council is being asked to consider. First, we have our real estate tax. And as we look at the adjustment that we are asking for consideration of $600,000, that is a 0.6% growth over the adopted budget. The sales tax, $3.2 million adjustment is approximately 14% above the adopted budget. And I will just say for the next slide, it will show you the revenue dashboard that you are used to seeing, which itemizes some of these as well. The transient occupancy tax adjustment of $1,470,000 is a 53.8% adjustment upwards. Prepared food and beverage tax, a three-point-five-million-dollar adjustment is a twenty-three-point-six percent adjustment upwards. The cigarette tax is a decrease of seventy-five-thousand dollars. And that's about a three-point-nine percent decrease below the adopted budget. Personal property of five-point-five-million-dollar adjustment, and that is a twenty-two-point-two percent adjustment above the adopted budget level. Business license, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is a four-point-five percent adjustment above the adopted budget. The downtown district tax projection is a sixty-thousand-dollar performance above the adopted budget. That's about nine-point-one percent. The short-term rental tax, fifty-two-thousand-dollar increase is about thirty-four-point-seven percent above the adopted budget level. Admissions tax, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, that is a one-hundred-and-sixteen-point-seven percent performance above the adopted budget level. Recordation tax, six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar increase above the adopted budget level, and that is a fifty-six percent increase above the adopted budget level. So for our local taxes, about fifteen-point-nine-million dollars increase above the adopted level, and that is an eight-point-nine percent increase over the adopted budget level, specifically for these local taxes. Our next slide looks at, there we go. Our next slide looks at our revenue monitoring dashboard, which you are accustomed to seeing. And this is a reflection of those local taxes, which we typically highlight for you as kind of our bellwether taxes in terms of, at the end of May, how are they performing relative to the target that we have set for those mathematically? Real estate was about point-eight-three percent ahead of target. Sales tax was performing still very well, fifteen-point-one-five percent ahead of target. Transient occupancy, fifty-eight-and-a-half percent ahead of target. Prepared food and beverage, twenty-one-point-nine percent ahead of target. And business license, five-point-three percent ahead of target. All of these local, all of our local taxes themselves were performing about eight-point-nine percent ahead of target. So, again, performing very well. And again, as we just itemized in a previous, the previous slide, some of these monitoring dashboard items indicated also in what we're asking you to consider for adjustment. As we look at other revenue adjustments, you'll see quite a few listed here. There at the bottom, you see total adjustments of about nine-point-four percent of an increase, and several, as you see, that are itemized here. We have our building inspection fees, building plan review. Interest income is a decrease. Our housing of federal prisoners is also a decrease. Bureau of Prisons is a decrease. Housing other locality prisoners, a decrease. Inmate phone commissions is an increase. School share of CSA, an increase. CSA itself, an increase. Sale of surplus property for fleet items, an increase. So the total of all other revenues, two-point-one-seven-four million, or about sixteen-and-a-half percent increase of non-local related taxes. So there on the very bottom of this slide, you see our total here tonight of eighteen-million-one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars, or about nine-point-four percent of our total budget that we are asking consideration for an increase. The other side of the equation, from the budget perspective, as we increase revenue, there is always an appropriation as well, as both sides equal each other. The eighteen-point-one-million dollars is divided, as you see here, in terms of the anticipated appropriations in the report that you receive, which here in the middle column is what your report indicates. The Roanoke City Public Schools would receive six-million-one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-three-hundred dollars of that eighteen-million-one-hundred-and-eleven dollars. Our transfer to reserves for fund balance requirement would be two-million-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four, two-million-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. The balance, less the other expenditures below it, would be appropriated to the contingency budget, one-million-four-hundred-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And then we have very specific appropriations that are tied to the revenues themselves. Our revenue increase for the district taxes for downtown Roanoke would be appropriated to Downtown Roanoke Incorporated. Three-eighths of the lodging tax would be appropriated to visit Virginia's Blue Ridge at five-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The building inspections revenue increase would be appropriated in the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars. The fleet revenue increase that was cited, ninety-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, would be appropriated for fleet-related purchases. Street paving, as has been previously discussed, two-million-one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Snow response would have an appropriation of three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. There would be two appropriations for the sheriff's area, one for inmate phone commissions and one for the jail medical contract, as noted here, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and then separately, thirty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. And finally, the last two items, there would be public safety overtime and temporary wages appropriations of two-million-two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, as well as an appropriation directly to the Children's Services Act, one-million-three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. That total is eighteen-million-one-hundred-and-eleven dollars. And there, Bob, I'll pause.
And I think what we tried to show in the column is next to that, so you see in that column it says rebate, is we tried to show what the impact, how those expenditures would differ if, for example, what we're about to talk about, which is the dollars that are associated with the increase over budget in the personal property tax were allocated as a rebate. So what you note is, obviously, the expenditure of the rebate. You would see the change in the school expenditures, so that's why you see the difference between the six-point-one-million and the three-point-nine-million. You would see, obviously, the change in the transfer of, to fund balance, because the expenditures change, and that changes that piece of it. A slight change in the contingency, and then the street paving. Everything else would remain the same. Those are the areas that would be impacted by the scenario that includes a rebate. And if you can go actually to the next slide, I think I'll touch on that, and then we'll open up for the public hearing.
And I'll just say, before I go to the next slide, not to confuse anything, that this expenditure appropriation assumes five-point-five-million dollars if the rebate is the determination of council. What you're going to see in a subsequent slide is a different calculation. So just wanted to make that clear before we move ahead, that this assumes a five-point-five-million-dollar figure.
So just to explain a little bit of the personal property tax, and then again, at that point, answer any questions, but also open up the public hearing for any comments the folks have. So what's on the slide right now is the levy. So that was the total value that was taxed, if you will, at the point at which the book closed on, May 31st, which was forty-three-million-eight-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. There was a little over ten-million dollars, ten, ten-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars of relief already granted. And that's, of course, every year, we grant a certain amount of relief. That leaves thirty-three-million-six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine. Historically, we collect ninety-one percent of what is owed. At last check, we are on pace to do that. So we think that's a safe number to assume. We will indeed collect ninety-one percent of that thirty-three-million-six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, which yields thirty-million-six-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. The number below that is what was in the budget. So that's your difference. So we had budgeted, expecting revenues of twenty-four-million-seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in personal property tax. And we've actually, we believe we will actually realize And that leaves the five-point-nine-million-dollar number that Amelia just mentioned. So that's, that's the number that I have provided to you all and kind of the preliminary information that gave you an idea of what the implications are, and then the scenarios that are available that we can talk about should you want to go in that direction. But we wanted to give you the full picture of what's included in this item, because I know we're going to talk a lot, obviously, about personal property tax, but didn't want to lose sight of the fact that it actually covers other revenues that have increased and decreased, as well as expenditures that have increased and decreased as well. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions, and then, obviously, after the public hearing, help you in the conversation regarding any rebate that you might want to move forward with.
All right, thank you. Let me go through, and council, you'll get a chance to answer your question. So let me go through the public hearing first, from the standpoint of opening the public hearing. All right, are there any citizens signing up to speak? Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll close the public hearing then. And now, I'm open for comments by the council. And Vice Mayor, show your hand.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I was just going to ask Ms. Merchant, those two PowerPoint slides, Ms. Merchant, they weren't included in our packet, were they?
No, the slides, what you have in packet is the list, is the list of the items that...
Right, it is the list. And you have to, and I don't have it in paper. We try to be as, you know, paperless as possible. But it was helpful to see the comparison on what would be funded and what would not be funded.
If the rebate...
If, right. And so, you know, what you have to do, I mean, I really can't do it like this. It would have been really nice to have what Ms. Merchant just had, but it's fine.
Yeah, and we, and we can go back and put that slide up just so it's up there as we talk.
Yeah, just put, yeah, put that up. Yeah, that would be helpful, thank you.
And again, that would, that would obviously vary, and we're ready to answer those questions if you wanted to do a rebate different than what's showing up here. So, obviously, anytime you change the numbers, it's going to change those four or five numbers below it. Most of the numbers stay the same as you work through.
Stay the same, except for the street paving. Do I still have the floor in here?
You still have the floor.
Thank you. With the street paving, Mr. Carroll, is that going to be someplace else on another line item? Or is that...
No, if, so this street paving, if you remember, we actually have street paving built into your base budget, as well as into the CIP. So this would be an additional street paving item, so two-point-one-million dollars. If ultimately the rebate is granted, then those projects just come off the list.
Come off the list. Do you remember what it was? I don't remember. I know that's a tough question.
The total amount?
Right, for the street paving, yeah.
It's total of seven-million dollars, I think, inclusive of this two million.
So this would have been almost nine-million if we...
No, no, that includes this two million.
That includes this?
Right, right.
Okay, see, that's what I wanted to know, okay.
All right.
Yeah, it's seven-point-four-million is what the total, the total paving schedule is coming in, including this.
Including that, right. So we would be right around five then.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council and Beszczich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city manager noted earlier, most years, we end up with some net revenue over what was budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year. And we always make sure that our school system gets the forty percent of that overage. Very rarely, we end up in a situation where revenues come in below projections. And that means that we have to adjust the transfer to the schools to account for that forty percent. And people, you know, get very upset that we're cutting the school budget. We're not cutting the school budget. We're sticking to the formula of forty percent. And I just want to make sure that people note that this year, that equates to a little bit more than six-million dollars of additional revenue for our schools because of our funding formula. That's very unusual, if not unique, in the Commonwealth of Virginia that any local government provides that additional assistance to the school system. And I just, again, I hope citizens are cognizant of that and appreciate the fact that education is our high priority. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else?
And so I can kind of explain what you all have that might help facilitate any conversation that you might want to have. So we have, we have provided some scenarios based on any kind of rebate that would be...
We have to vote on this one first.
Yeah, yeah, I just don't know, when we get to the other item, we have different, well, do you want to debate that at that point, rather than with the appropriation? Okay.
All right, any further comments by members of council?
Timmy, you go.
That was an important statement.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question, if I could, please.
Yes, sir.
Do we not need to address the size of any rebate, if any, to know what the appropriation's going to be?
Well, and that's why I was wondering if we really needed to have the discussion, because that may cause this to actually, because remember, we've presented this ordinance as if there is no rebate, because that's what was advertised. So I think in order for us to know what needs to change in this, we also need to know whether there's going to be. The ordinances that are the next item are, if indeed you do wish to grant a rebate, that's just to make that happen. So I do think there needs to be discussion on that.
And, Mr. Mayor, I believe Ms. Merchant is prepared with an alternative should there be a rebate.
Well, should we...
If there be desire to have a rebate.
Well, that's what, that's what actually is shown on that.
So, the question is, should we discuss that now? Before we move on, or should we just...
Yes, I think the amount of any rebate, yes, no, Yes, I think the amount of any rebate, yes, no, and what amount, I think, should be discussed now, because that will allow Ms. Merchant to give you, make sure that you have in front of you, an appropriation.
Okay.
If a rebate is granted, it's going to require us to amend the ordinance or present a different ordinance than what you've gotten from you.
I amend this ordinance as of course right now.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, you got the floor, Mayor.
I will move us to this slide, which does give us some of those different scenarios that we can consider. And the first of which, and again, this scenario is using a 5.9 million dollar expectation of funding available, expected to be available for the rebate, the 5.9 million dollars. If there is no rebate, in that very first column, the schools would receive the amount that's referenced here, 2,363,426 dollars. The reserve balance would be required to be 950,688 dollars. It would allow for 2,190,000 dollars to be appropriated for the paving exercises. There would be no rebate, and contingency would be appropriated, 404,450 dollars. That is scenario one. Scenario two, if a rebate were allowed, were to be allowed for the full 5.9 million dollars in terms of a flat dollar figure up to that amount to be provided to the citizen for their personal property tax, it would be up to 82 dollars and 77 cents per vehicle. However, no citizen would receive more than they paid. Okay?
Say that again, Madam, say that again.
The rebate would be up to 82 dollars and 77 cents per vehicle. But any citizen who paid less than that in personal property tax for their vehicle would only receive a maximum of what they paid.
And that's...
It would not exceed that maximum.
And that's based off of 70, at the time that the levy was issued, that was 70, there were 71,388 vehicles that actually were accounted for, that owed tax. So, that's how you arrive at that number. When you take that 5.9 million divided by the 71,000-plus vehicles, that's how you yield that number.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Best Pitch.
Well, just to make sure I understand, what's shown on the slide up there is that if you paid 500 dollars in car tax, the rebate would be 87 dollars and 70 cents, but you're saying that it would not, it would be reduced to 82.77?
That's the next scenario. The next scenario is on the basis of a percentage of what the citizen paid.
She was on that column, too, Mr. Best Pitch.
I was on the column that is the third column from the left.
I'm sorry, I see what you're saying now, I'm sorry, I got you.
Okay.
Yeah.
The fourth column from the left, second from the right, is if we base the rebate on a percentage. And the percentage is calculated based on the 5.9 million dollars being a 17.5% amount of the total levy that we would have expected to receive at 91%.
So, do we have vehicle owners who pay more than 500 dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, that's an example.
So, it's seven, right, so it would be more than 87.70 if they paid more.
Correct. It would be 17.5% of what they paid.
Whatever they paid.
Correct.
Hmm.
Yep.
Okay. The fourth, the final column is just a reference to if council elected for any reason to retain up to a million dollars of the revenue. It would have an impact of 400,000 dollars would be appropriated to the school division, 160,900 dollars would be retained by the city for reserves. Street paving could receive 439,100 dollars, and there would be no appropriation for contingency. And that's for every 1 million dollars retained by the city.
And that column is just there should you want to look at scenarios that are somewhere between zero and full, that just gives you some sense. It would, of course, obviously, adjust the other numbers that Amelia has mentioned, either the flat rate or the percentage rate, depending on, because your 5.9 million changes at that point. So, these scenarios are viable, meaning we can actually achieve this through Treasurer's Office, DOT, and so on. So, we know that these would work. The other piece of this that I included in the information I had provided to you all previously is, we would recommend that any rebate that's decided upon to move forward, that it would be available, we would actually issue the rebate in September, and there's a reason for that, because what, what we want to be able to do is to say that as of August 31st, anyone that is current on their taxes, meaning they either have established a payment plan that they're current on, or they've paid their taxes, would be eligible. This, in effect, gives a grace period for folks that may not have, for whatever reason, paid their taxes at the due date to get those paid, so that they can be a part of the rebate portion of it as well. And that still allows us to incorporate it into this fiscal year. There are, I will tell you, there are only a handful of communities right now discussing rebates, but those communities that are, there are a couple of them who are saying that they're going to wait until, they're considering waiting until December when their records are fully audited. But it's not something we believe is necessary, because, again, we feel confident that the 91% is a reasonable collection rate. Having said that, if we do go the route of a rebate, we would also include, recommend including in the ordinance that if, for some reason, the number came in 5.8 million instead of 5.9 million, that we would be able to make that adjustment accordingly and not have to come back and actually seek additional council approval at that point. We'd be able to make that based on those numbers and stuff. But we, again, right now, we feel confident that that number is a, is a good number, but just in case something happened.
All right, so we need to have a discussion before we deal with this budget ordinance right here.
Correct, but what we would need to know is, if you don't issue a rebate, the budget ordinances exactly sound move forward with the approval. If you want to issue a rebate, then we've got to adjust what's incorporated into the ordinance based off of what it is that you have indicated you want to do, which you'll take action on then in the subsequent item.
All right. All right, any, well, a discussion from members of council, I recognize you. What's the best pitch?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a good example up here, and I don't know what the highest amount of personal property tax someone paid, because they have a vehicle that's worth more than anybody else's vehicle in the city of Roanoke. But if you've got a vehicle that your tax was only 56, is it 56, 48, you're going to get back 9 dollars and 91 cents. If you have a vehicle that's so valuable that you had to pay 500 dollars, you're going to get about nine times what the person who only paid 991. I, I, I just don't see that as equitable. You know, anytime you charge everybody the same tax or the same fee for something, the people of less means are hit harder than the people of higher means, which means that the tax is regressive. In this situation, if everybody gets the same amount, it's the opposite, it's progressive. The people who have vehicles that are, and there's, there's exceptions to what I'm about to say, I understand, but by and large, the people who have vehicles that are not worth very much don't have much income, need the rebate more than somebody that's driving a car worth, I think Mr. Spencer was referring earlier to something that might be in excess of 500,000 dollar vehicle. You know, you, you don't need a percentage, well, if you, if you need a percentage rebate driving a vehicle like that, you, you should have considered buying something else. So, I'm in favor of what is presented to us as option number three in the ordinances to give everyone who is current, as Mr. Cal described, as of August 31st, the rebate in the amount of 82 dollars and 77 cents, which would mean that if they paid less than that, then they're getting what's essentially a tax credit, a refundable tax credit. Those people need the money more than anybody else, and they're the most likely to go right out and spend that money in a way that stimulates our local economy.
All they need to do is go by a service station, and that'll be...
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
I just have a question.
All right, I'm going to go down and give everybody an opportunity. Anybody want to go after, what's the best pitch? Or, Mayor, I like your, your idea, I just, what about that middle person in there that says, you know, I don't have, my car is worth more than that, but based on what the formula, one of the formulas, that I would be getting so much back? I mean, do we discard that person, that, that middle person in there, if, if you understand what I mean, I'm trying to say, a person that has a...
The, the middle person is, is in the middle. I mean, you know, he's going to get the same amount back as anybody else. And so, it does not help that individual as much as some others, and it helps that individual a lot more than some others. So, you know, it's, it's, I, I don't know how else you would try to fine tune that in a way that would take something like that into consideration.
All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Best Pitch.
I just, before we, I debate, I just wanted to clarify, because we do have another option that, I'm not sure if we have the exact same thing that Ms. Merchant has, but in the column two, it said up to 82.77, that is the flat amount, but if you only paid 55 dollars, you would get 55 dollars, not 82.77. Is that the...
That's correct.
That's the column two? Okay, that was just my question, and I'll keep...
And, Madam Vice Mayor, that's item number two.
Right, that's what I have, is item number two, but then when we looked at item number three, then we have, but we don't, we have three, but we have four columns.
Yes, I didn't have that.
Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm still on column number two, because I have 1, 2, 3, not 1, 2, 3, 4.
Yeah, there's effectively two versions of the flat rate.
Right, right, and I don't see but one version of the...
Right, you've got one version that would afford everybody 82.77, you've got another version that would, 82.77, except that no one would receive more than what they paid.
Right, and that, and I, I think that's what we have here as number two.
That's correct.
We just numbered them so we could keep track of them, but that did answer my question, Ms. Merchant, thank you.
All right, do you all want to go right down the line and see where we are? I've got Mr. Best Pitch, we come right down with Ms. Calbs and the Vice Mayor, and go right down the line and see where you stand, or what questions you have. You may, you may still have some questions. So, we're just, we're still on comments by council. So, Vice Mayor? Joe, I'm sorry, Joe Calbs.
Yeah, so one of my questions is, I know that in the process of paying the, the property tax, and everyone kind of dealing with the shock of all of that, the increased values, the number that we're seeing, the 6 million, is that based on what we have received? Because my hunch is that there are still outstanding property tax bills that have not been paid.
There are, we, we expect to receive, as we have in the past, 91% of what we're owed. When there was last, when we last checked in, so kind of comparing year over year at a particular point in time, we were right on track with that. So, right now, we expect, we have not collected that yet, but we expect to do so as it works its way through now. And that's why we want to make sure, if a rebate is granted and for, for some reason we do not collect that, then the rebate will be based off of what it is that we did collect that is that lower amount. But we expect that to take place.
So, so one of the questions that I received, and probably several of us did, was, and I don't know whether we set this or whether this is something that is set through the Treasurer's Office, and that is, if someone, if someone's property tax bill was significantly larger than they had anticipated or budgeted for, there did not appear to be an option for a payment plan, and that was concerning to me. But I don't know whether that's something the council sets, or whether that's something the Treasurer determines.
The Treasurer determines that, and my recollection is that the insert that was placed in the bills that went out did include language relative to being able to set up a payment plan.
That is true, I know people who've done it, they do have a payment plan.
Okay, I, I didn't see that in the notice, that's why I asked the question.
I didn't either.
Yeah, and there is, there is, that's something the Treasurer has opted to do, you do not, you know, there are certain localities that do not do that, they just continue to assign late fees. Our Treasurer has for years opted to afford and offer the, the payment plans, and I'm, again, normally, there's not an insert in the bill. This year, because of the increase, the Commissioner and the Treasurer opted to include that insert, and I'm relatively certain that insert, and a couple of you shaking your head that it did indicate in there that you could say. And obviously, obviously, anyone reaching out to the Treasurer either to pay or say they could not pay would be offered that opportunity as well.
The, the last thing I'll say is, you know, I'm, I'm generally supportive of the rebate. I've, I've talked to a number of people that are in different places regarding this, just citizens in general, and some who, because of the hardship, would appreciate a rebate for a variety of reasons, and some who said, you know, if we can continue increasing the paving in our city because so many streets need it, I, I support that as well. And I've, I've heard mixed responses to that. I will say that I was in the Summit Hills area this, you know, a couple days ago, newly paved roads, and, and so much appreciation for those because the, the road conditions prior to that were pretty awful. So, I just wanted to share that, that kind of balance of perspectives that I've been hearing. And there are some areas that, that still need that priority of paving. So, while I, I support a rebate of some kind, I just wanted to make everybody aware of what I've been hearing in talking with citizens about both perspectives. I don't have any additional questions, though.
Well, I guess we're trying to determine which way we're going to go, which item option...
Well, I think I would certainly go with what we believe is the most equitable approach, and if that's the, what was the one you said, Bill, three?
Number three.
I'm totally confused by these three versions, going back and forth.
That would be the flat rate of 82.77.
Flat rate, that's number three.
Yeah, I would lean toward that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree, you know, with the, with the paving, of course, that's why I keep bringing it up, because I had a gentleman here today, you know, talking about paving. If that's completely out, you know, that, I'm fine with that, I, I would consider a rebate for sure, but I don't know which one I have decided on just yet, because I think, for me, equitable would be, you know, up to 82.77, and then the individual that paid 55 dollars would receive the 55 dollars. So, that, for me, would be option two. But if, you know, council leaned towards option three, that's fine, 82.77, we're not talking about a lot of money, but, but when you say fair and equitable, I think it would be fair and equitable to, to receive what you've actually paid. So, that, for me, would be option two, but I'm certainly amenable to option three, the flat rebate, and, you know, unfortunately, that would not include any paving. You know, the, the reserve balance, the, the, you know, RCPS, that's one thing, but street paving, I know that there is such a need for, for some paving, but it doesn't look like it, you know, will get an additional funding this round, so I'm okay with that.
All right, you can...
I just do have, I do have a question for the city manager, and you mentioned it to me when we met, just for the public. Those that will still be under a payment plan after August the 31st, will they still qualify?
Yes, as long as they're at that moment in time current with their payment plan, then they would still qualify, as if they had paid their taxes when they were due, so yes.
Right, and the percentage that you gave, the 17...
Point five.
Point five, that is if we get the 5.9 million.
Both of, both of...
Right, whichever, but I mean, if, if, whatever amount. And that would give the person at least part of their money back if they paid 1,000 dollars in paying their personal property tax because of the increase.
Yes, what would change the percentage is if you decided less than 5.9, say you wanted rebate three, then we would have to recalculate that percentage.
Correct.
But yes, that assumes 5.9.
But looking at the one that we are looking at, then that individual who may have paid over 300 additional dollars, they would receive about 1.75.
Right, their percent, their dollar amount would go up.
Based on percentage, the dollar amount.
It's a 17.9%.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be a 17.9%.
Yeah, based on, based on what I'm seeing, for those, because we don't know, that there could have been, still a possibility, there could have been an increase, but not a significant increase in their taxes. But with this significant increase, trying to, at least, you can't give them the, the entire amount back, but trying to give them some portions of that money, is where I am.
Yeah, and again, I think this is also important, and I know I've shared this with some of you individually, is none of the entities, none of the communities that either did things prior to the tax bills going out, or who are considering rebating, have provided all of the funding back.
Right.
There is not a scenario that, that has played out yet, because, again, Roanoke County's a good example, my understanding is, they still ended up with a surplus of almost 4 million dollars even after they granted the relief that they granted prior to the bills going out. So, so yes, I think your point is...
Yes, not to try to make them whole, but to try to give them some rebate than trying to do, I don't agree with the flat amount, because if, if your taxes, your tax rate was below, and you had an older car, and you didn't pay anything, I don't think it's fair that you get 82 dollars when someone else has paid twice as much.
Right, and that's why, again, we gave the scenario where you could do the flat rate just not to exceed the amount that you paid.
Right, right, and so that's why, and I looked at the, and that's why I looked at the number one, which is the percentage rate giving you the 17.5%, which would give you a little bit more because of the amount that you did pay. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, Ms. Vice.
That does, because I'm, I'm still wrestling with what is fair and what is equitable. So, just out of curiosity, where did the 17.5 percentage come from? How was that arrived upon?
It's a mathematical formula that...
Okay, that, that 17.5% represents the 5.9 million divided by what we would expect to collect of that, that 91% of the levy. 5.9 million is 17.5% of that 91% of the full levy after the relief that we've already given.
Thank you, and I think that's important to say, is based on a formula, it's just not some arbitrary number.
And what that does, that, that ensures that as the percentage is granted and as those actual dollars change, vehicle by vehicle, person by person, it will not, the total will not exceed the 5.9 million dollars, which is the surplus that has been realized.
Gotcha.
And that's why, to Ms. Moon Randall's point, if you, if you rebated something less than the 5.9, that percentage has to be recalculated to make sure that you would not exceed whatever that amount is.
Okay, well, like I said, I'm still... Okay, well, like I said, I'm still wrestling with what would be equitable. And to Ms. Moon's point, I'm not finding it comfortable that someone that has paid significantly less amount, whereas someone who has a vehicle that, you know, is five times of more value than, than someone who's, who's as much less, I'm just wrestling with how do we make that equitable across the board? So, I'm not really sure, but I'm leaning, looking at option number two, and, I don't know, let's finish the conversation. Exactly.
Based on, and I'm trying to record these as we go down the line, is that what you were saying was more aligned with option one?
Yes, sir, I was putting number one.
Okay. All right, now, we're going to have to come back down the line after you all to pick a scenario. Think about it.
Digest this.
All right, go ahead, Sammy Sanchez, Joe.
My question is, do we have to make a decision tonight?
Well.
Yes.
I believe you do, if I might, and that's on whether to rebate the five-point-nine million.
Right, how, you know, what you rebate.
Oh, okay, that's good.
And the reason for that is because, again, the budget ordinance in front of you has to be, has to be decided today. The actual mechanism or methodology does not, it's not going to get any easier than it is tonight, I'm sure, because you're going to get, fortunately, right now, you have a handful of opinions, you're going to get a lot of opinions afterwards as well. But, yes, you could potentially, we just would need to know, are you going to rebate the full amount or not, because that allows us to actually act on the budget amendment if you're not ready to actually take action on how you plan on rebating that amount if you choose to rebate.
And let me say that, you know, nobody is going, you know, we respect everybody's opinion, everybody's doing, how you feel that, so.
I'm just leaning towards the seventeen-and-a-half percent, because I feel like the percentage.
So, you're at option one, do you?
Yes.
Now, I'm at option one or two.
Is that everybody, everybody, do we have everybody? We got to come back to, to, well, I'm assuming I had to come back up the line. I mean, you're one, Ms. Moon Reynolds, one. I would come back to Anita and, and come back to the Vice Mayor, and go back to Ms. Cobb, and Ms. Bestbitch is, and you can change this, but I'm saying, from what I heard.
Mr. Mayor, I think that we have a hundred percent on the five-point-nine million.
We do, it's just the methodology.
Right, and then that's the only item for now that really needs, Ms. Merchant needs to know, so that she can do that.
Yeah, I would.
And then, we go down to B, where we can make this sausage in public.
Well, I think we're in agree, in agreement with the five-point-nine B.
Yeah, I mean, we could deal, I would just prefer, and again, it's ultimately up to you all, but I think I would prefer that, even if we act on this budget ordinance with the five-point-nine million dollar rebate, which is fine because that allows us to move on this item, that as you're, at the next item, we go ahead and make a decision on the rebate with it. So, if we want to act on the, if we want to act on the amended budget ordinance with the five-point-nine million dollar rebate granted, then we can certainly do that now. I think we've got the ordinance.
With the understanding that the budget ordinance that is amending the budget is five-point-five million.
Five-point-five million. And not five-point-nine?
Or are we asking to amend that to five-point-nine?
It should be five-point-nine because that's the number we're working off of.
I'm a little bit confused.
It's not going to be advertised.
Right, we advertise the five-point-five as the whole package piece of it. So, Tim, how do we?
We advertise, I thought, a total of eighteen.
Eighteen-point-one, yeah.
Point-one, and since we're less, we're within that amount, and we can go ahead and make that amendment on the budget ordinance, as you and I discussed, without having to have, re-advertize and have another public hearing.
Because the total amount still doesn't change, it's just reallocating.
Total amount is actually going to be less.
Yeah, it's reallocating more of it to the rebate than what was originally anticipated.
Well.
Okay. We need to look at that, because there are specific revenues that are adjusted for specific expenditure amounts. The five-point-five million.
Do you have an amended budget ordinance that would include the rebate?
The rebate at five-point-five million.
Is five-point-five also what's in these ordinances as far as seventeen-point-five percent and the eighty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents?
Yes.
Okay, then we should be fine.
Okay, that's with the expectation, it's with the expectation of five-point-nine million, but a conservative adjustment of five-point-five.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Merchant, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Would that, that number would change if, if we were, just hypothetically, if we were to select option two, because it wouldn't be a flat eighty-two, it would be up to that amount, so some would get less, right? So, it wouldn't be the full five-point-nine.
It is an up-to amount because some would realize, some would realize that full eighty-two.
Right.
Right.
But some would not because they have not paid that amount, correct?
Correct.
So, would that mean that that number would, we would have more left and not expend the entire five?
Yes, under that scenario, that is what would occur.
Right, right, okay, right.
Correct, but am I correct that the budget ordinance allows us to amend that September first when we know exactly what the number is?
The ordinances are worded in that way when we talk about at least the ninety-one percent.
Yes.
If we reach that ninety-one percent collection rate, then we're, no numbers need to change.
But if we don't, when we have to modify that ordinance, we'd have to come back and adjust the ordinance, because if you don't use that amount.
Then we have to appropriate it.
Then you have to appropriate it, would that, would we have to decide on that, or would we?
Yes, but at that point, the dollar amount would be significantly lower than anything we're talking about.
So, okay.
Yeah, maybe we would have, and again, we may not have to worry about that because if we hit the ninety-one percent, we won't have that issue.
We won't have that issue.
And if you, you know, if you chose the amount that is the not-to-exceed amount, then you also would lessen the likelihood of that issue, because if it's, if it's the option that is the not-to-exceed what you paid, then there are going to, you know, the math is calculated off of a flat eighty-two, so if you don't realize that, that full value, there's going to be some residual left after that.
And we could decide how to appropriate that if that were to.
Right, at that point, yeah.
It would be a part of our year-end discussion.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And again, I would expect it not to be a substantial dollar amount, but.
But it could be some.
Yeah, and we have to appropriate it, even if it's two dollars.
Okay.
Ms. Bestbitch.
Well, this question has actually been formulating in my mind as we've gone down the line here. I keep hearing this, if, if on August thirty-one, we're at such and such a point or whatever. If we're not, do we have to come back and revisit this at that point anyway?
The ordinance is structured, the ordinance that we've presented, that Tim's presented to you all, is structured in a way that if it is, if we, if we don't achieve, for whatever reason, we don't hit the ninety-one percent collection that we're projecting, say it's at eighty-nine percent, it will automatically adjust the numbers accordingly. So, instead of it being eighty-two seventy-seven, it's eighty-one something, or eighty dollars or something. That does not require.
And if we get ninety-three, then it's.
No, it is set at, to cap that piece of it. So, if it comes in over, then we're going to have to come back, then we would have to come back.
Well, let me just make sure I understand again, the eighty-two seventy-seven is five-point-nine million dollars divided by the seven thousand plus whatever number of vehicles that you stated earlier. That's how we get eighty-two seventy-seven.
That is correct. Yeah, seventy-one thousand three hundred and eighty.
You know, if everybody gets back seventeen-point-five percent, that's equal. We've had a lot of discussion in recent years about the difference between equality and equity. It's not equitable. It's equal, but it's not equitable. It's giving everybody the same-sized box to stand on, we've all seen this drawing. Whether the box doesn't give them enough height to look over the fence, or whether the box puts them, they didn't need the box to start with. And I think we've got some people in this city who really don't need the box. They don't need seventeen-point-five percent back because they paid, in a way, some people pay a thousand dollars.
Two thousand.
In car tax.
Yeah.
Two thousand?
Mm-hmm.
They, those people that are driving a car that they have to pay a thousand or two thousand dollars, they need seventeen-point-five percent? I just don't see that as equitable at all. I, I, I'm really, yeah, I mean, if we do the version two, up to eighty-two seventy-seven, then we know for sure that some people are going to get less than that, which means we have some more revenue that we have to come back and deal with at some point. I just, I can't, I just can't see that.
Well, Mr. Bestbitch, I would just add that the, the people who drove those thousand, five-hundred, thousand-dollar cars or whatever, they created that surplus, so are you saying that it, that they should not receive the rebate that they would be entitled to because they are forced to?
Sure, that's why, that's why there's different income brackets on your, different tax brackets on your income. The people who are earning more are paying more than their share relative to the people who are earning less. That's progressive taxation.
In Roanoke City, anybody who owns a personal vehicle paid three-point-four-five. There is not a scale for those individuals in Roanoke City for personal property taxes, so I would tend to disagree with you on that.
Well, this gives us a chance to address that very fact. I wish, I wish there was, no, no, let me just, to say, I really wish that there was, that we could say, if your vehicle is worth up to, let's just say, five thousand dollars, there's a rate, if your vehicle is worth between five thousand and one dollars and twenty thousand dollars, there's a higher rate that you pay, that's progressive, that's equitable. It's not equal, but it's equitable. We can't do that. You know, I've been disgusted for years about how this whole thing got started in the first place, of somebody running for governor, putting up signs all over the Commonwealth of Virginia, saying, "No car tax," who never had any intention, never had any intention of doing away with the car tax, never made any effort to do away with the car tax. But during the campaign, what they said was, well, let's just say, for example, the first year, if your vehicle is worth five thousand dollars or less, you don't pay anything, and then there, and the second year goes to ten thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. So, a lot of people who have vehicles that are worth less should be paying zero. The only people that pay zero are people that have a vehicle that's valued at a thousand dollars or less, am I right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you do, even though the tax rate is applied equally, the relief is not.
Right.
So, remember, the relief is based on the vehicle's value because once you get over a certain, under a certain value, you pay no taxes, over a certain value, you no longer benefit from the relief that the state provides.
Up to twenty thousand dollars.
So, there is a little bit of that kind of.
There is, there is something there, but what I'm saying is, if it had been done the way it was, what was claimed to be done during the campaign, anybody with a va, with a car worth more than twenty thousand dollars would not be paying anything on that first twenty thousand dollars of value, but they'd be paying the rate on everything above that. But everybody with a car less than twenty thousand dollars would be paying zero. And that, that just never happened. I just, I think that we don't have a lot of chances in our business to do something as equitable as this, and I just hate to see us pass that opportunity up.
Interesting.
I, you know, the same thing with, with real estate tax. Why should somebody that has a house worth ten thousand dollars pay the same rate on real estate tax as somebody that has a house worth a million dollars? That doesn't make any sense, but that's the way the system works. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anybody else? Any more comments?
I just have a, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Move it.
I just have a question. Could we agree on doing the rebate and how we disperse the money later on? I mean, we could agree tonight on the rebate, that we're going to give back money. Is that a good thing to do tonight?
We need, we need to do that tonight because we need to approve the budget amendment, either including the rebate or excluding the rebate. So, that, that action needs to occur with, with this item. Your, your next item then actually deals with the method by which you would grant any kind of rebate. And again, it would still be my preference that that actually take place too, but that is ultimately up to you, the budget one does need to take place.
Well, I will, can I just say one other thing? I guess I would have to agree with Mr. Cowell because if, whatever way that we decide, we have to give the, we have to think about the Treasurer and our Commissioner, you know, because those, the, they're complicated, you know, they'll have to go and calculate those, and I'm pretty sure that's going to be a lot of manpower, very time-consuming, and so I think in all fairness to our Commissioner and our Treasurer that we, hopefully, we can make some sort of decision for them tonight.
Yeah, I think that the sooner we know, the better.
The sooner the better, I agree.
Because it allows everybody to start working on it.
I agree.
All right, so are we, where are we now? Are we ready to, we all agree that it's five-point-five?
If we're going to do the rebate, I think we need an amended budget ordinance, don't we? And do you have one?
We would need to, oh, yeah, we'll have one, but that, based on what the decision is.
I'm hearing the five-point-five rebate. Is that what I'm hearing from Council?
That's what I'm thinking is the number.
Yeah, whatever the number is, that, is it five-point-five or five-point-nine?
Yeah, that's, and that's what you all decided.
Yeah, which one is?
It's five-point.
What we used in the advertisement was five-point-five.
Okay.
Okay. So, it's five-point?
Five-point-five.
Five-point-five.
Five, okay.
So, if you divide five-point-five by seven thousand plus people, it would be less than eighty-two seventy-seven, right?
Well, that's the question I'll ask of Tim because our expectation is that the revenue received could be five-point-nine, and the ordinance allows for that rebate, should that occur.
And that's the one we're looking at.
So, we're still, we're still basing the rebate on five-point-nine million, but the ordinance is going to be based off of the five-point-five million, as long as we realize the five-point-nine million, it'd be exactly what was, what was shown on here. Anything less than that would be then adjusted accordingly and would not have to come back.
Okay, good.
So, okay, I think I understand. All right, so, do these scenarios change then, based on the five-point-five?
No, the scenarios, the scenarios we've been talking about will not change.
But we do need an amended budget.
We do need amended, we need an amended budget.
Which is what I'm looking for.
It would be adopted as amended, correct? Or have to put it on as a penalty?
He's going, he has it, he's going to print it.
Okay.
No, okay, no, that's what else, that's what.
So, we want to.
Okay, so.
So, we need a motion?
Yeah, we're getting the revised ordinance.
All right, so we can be in recess then.
Yes.
Let's be in recess till you're back. All right, let's be in reset till you're back.
Council back in session, and I will ask Attorney Mr. Spencer.
We can have a motion to substitute the amended budget ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And just for clarity, what the budget ordinance shows is actually less revenue, obviously. So it appropriates less revenue than what was going to be realized without the rebate. So that's why you now see instead of eighteen, one, eighteen million, one hundred and eleven thousand, you now see revenue of twelve million, six hundred and eleven thousand.
Right.
Because we never realize it as revenue because we rebate it back as we go through by whatever means you determine in the next item. So that's how it's been reflected in the ordinance.
All right, it's been moved to second. Now, we voting on it, or?
You can vote, Madam Clerk, can they vote on it as substituted?
Has the title paragraph?
It's a substitution.
I don't know if the, has the title paragraph changed?
I don't think we ever put it on the floor.
Okay. If she can read it.
Title paragraph?
Yeah.
Oh, it looks like it's the same title paragraph.
I think it is.
It is the same.
It should be.
Yeah, I believe it is, it's just the amount's changed.
Yes, just the amount's changed.
But I don't, did you, did you read the title paragraph originally?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was trying to, it went so far around that I was just trying to hear. Okay.
We can vote on the.
You're sat there.
So we can?
Yeah, we are.
We're voting on it?
Yeah, we ready to vote then, right?
All right, so you call a roll, Madam Clerk.
I'll try to rush it, the budget.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And the motion passed. All right. All right. Now, we're back to picking the scenario that we think, each one, let's say.
Yeah, I think we're under new business now.
We're ready to go to new business then, so. All right, consideration of action undertaken with regard to anticipated surplus in connection with 2022 personal property revenue. And I call on City Manager to, for any comments before we vote again on the adopted.
Sure, so, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this item is, obviously with your last item, you voted and agreed to actually rebate the amount of the surplus, which was again the five point nine million, the surplus back. Now, what you're doing is determining the methodology of the rebate. And so, again, just as a reminder, you, though there are many different versions of options, you have been provided three different options or three different ways in which you could rebate that back. One of those is a flat rate, not to exceed the amount someone paid. The other is a flat rate regardless of the amount, in other words, but capped at the flat rate of eighty-two seventy-seven. And then the third scenario, I'm not going the number order that you have, but the other option is the percentage, which would be regardless of your bill that you received, it would be the seventeen point five percent is what you would be rebated back. And again, under all of those scenarios, that would occur in September, as long as you've either paid your bill or you're current on a payment plan as of August thirty-one.
Which, as you called them out, the number one is the last.
Yes, I did not do them in the same order.
Yeah, see, he read them back.
Yeah, sorry. I think in your case, number one is the percentage.
Yes.
Number two is the flat rate not to exceed.
Correct.
And number three is the flat rate period.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Ladies and gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance for the one-time payment equal to seventeen point five percent of the tax paid on each vehicle.
Second.
All right, remove the second.
Oh, what's wrong? Mayor, Mayor. Excuse me. You've already voted or made the motion, but we have one gentleman that wanted to speak on this issue.
Oh.
We haven't read the title paragraph, I think we're going to.
I think you can just get the title paragraph.
All right, Madam Clerk, then, the title paragraph again, opportunity to read.
Okay, now.
And I will invite this person to speak on that.
That's option number one. Okay, yes. Yes, I have it, number one.
Yes. Option one. Okay. Title paragraph. An ordinance authorizing and approving the return of a portion of the surplus FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two personal property tax revenues to taxpayers with a one-time payment equal to seventeen point five percent of the tax paid on each vehicle, provided such taxpayer has paid their twenty twenty-two personal property taxes and any penalties or fees thereon by August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and provided that a minimum of ninety-one percent of the net levy has been received by August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, establishing an effective date, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance.
All right. All right. Okay, any discussion, Council?
I think we're ready for you.
Oh, yes, sir. Could you give us, you have his name?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council. My name is Terrence Gardner, and I want to speak about that, the rebate, the property taxes increase and all those things. I've heard a lot of good things, but it seems like y'all have y'all mind already made up. And that's, that's good. That's good with me. But what about the next time, the next year, when it comes about again? Are we going to do this again? Mr. Bestfitch, you said it best. It was a governor that came out with that slogan. I was one of the ones that was incarcerated. I did fourteen years in prison. By the grace of God, I've been home eighteen years now, and I'm doing well for myself and my family. And I heard someone say about a five hundred and thirteen thousand dollar car. Then you said about the other car. I deserve to have a twenty thousand dollar car. Me and my wife both have cars that cost, and I deserve that. But to go up on our property taxes, I didn't understand that because I can't even get a street light on my street. You know, to give me eighty-seven, eighty-two dollars, I don't want that. I want to have a street light on my street. I want my grass across the street from my house where there's no property or nobody own it. I want that cut. Y'all put brand-new drainages on the sidewalks and everything. Why have it if you got grass growing all over it? Why have it? So to give me eighty-seven dollars, I don't want that. Put it towards putting a light on my street. The police is scared to come on my street at nighttime because it's pitch dark. I go to work early in the morning. It's dark out there. So if you're going to, you know, give people money back, because that's what people want. We want, we want to see our streetlights lit up. We see the violence and everything that's going around and everything, and you saying, well, how can we help towards that? That's how we can help, if we had more streetlights and things. You know? I grew up in Washington DC. Washington DC is not the same now. You go there, there's cameras everywhere. There's cameras everywhere, pretty much. You can't do nothing in Washington DC. If you do, you go in jail. So, you know, I just wanted to just say, hey, the rebate, that's cool and everything, but give the people of this city what we deserve and what we want, if you're going to use that money. And to say that I don't deserve a car, a twenty thousand dollar car, thirty thousand dollar car, whatever I pay for my car, I deserve that. I work hard. Matter of fact, I just got off my second job to come down here to be at this meeting. I try to be a very productive citizen now. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask you, let me ask you, sir, what street do you live on?
I live on Wyoming, over there, you know, the state streets. And see, and see, and see, you know, people say, well, we did this for Tenth Street. Man, you had people to retire after they did Tenth Street, that's how long it took. That's how long it took. After they finished their job, they retired. But we can't, we got potholes over there. You start from Wyoming, Virginia, Vermont, all those streets there, they're terrible, terrible. Streetlights, we don't even have them. I have older people that live on my street.
Well.
You know?
Appreciate that. We'll ask the City Manager to look into that, because I think.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing with your life.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, thank you, Reverend Doctor, thank you.
Coming down here.
All right. We have a council, uh, three comments.
I got a comment, I'll try to be brief because I want to say something.
We got a motion on the floor now for scenario number one.
No, I think she has a comment, I think the Vice Mayor has a comment.
Yeah, I'll be brief, Mayor, if I have a four.
You have it.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's certainly been really tough for all of us to try to make a decision, and I just wanted to say that, you know, we had a lot of comparisons when they talked about the rebate, about Roanoke County and Salem, but I just want to make sure that our residents know the difference. Roanoke County has a slightly higher rate, I think theirs is like three point five, but what a lot of people don't know is that Roanoke City pays for its paving. We pay for it at one hundred percent, or four point five, I think they give us, what, four and a half percent, so literally very little. Roanoke County has their streets paved at one hundred percent. So when people demand, you know, rebate because Roanoke County has done it, I want them to also realize that Roanoke County does not have to pay for street paving. I want them to also realize that we have one of the biggest safety nets in southwest Virginia with our Department of Social Services, with our homeless assistance team. I don't think that Roanoke County even has a homeless assistance team, or Salem, I Googled it. It comes up Ram House outside of Roanoke, or Rescue Mission, you know, outside of Roanoke. So I just want our residents to know that our dollars have to go a very long way because we have to provide for all of our citizens, and our citizens require a little bit more. So therefore, our dollars have to go a little bit more. I know that if I don't get some street paving done, which I have tried to advocate for, Ms. Petunia Barlow is going to remove me from council personally, she said, and I know she can do that. She, she meant that. And we had a gentleman here today talking about street paving. The young man that just left talked about streetlights. So it was tough for me to see a surplus, you know, not being able to be used for capital improvement projects. But I know that people see it differently. I know a lot of people are struggling right now, cost eighty-some dollars just to fill up a tank of gas. So with that being said, I am in favor of rebate, but I want our residents to know that, that we try our best to stretch those dollars as far as we possibly can. And, you know, to compare us to Roanoke County, I don't think is fair because they have a little bit more, and they have a little bit less to deal with, their public safety. So I'm not going to go on and on, it's been a long night, but just so you know, there's no comparison in Roanoke County, and like, I think the City Manager asserted earlier, even after their rebate, they still had a surplus. Is that correct, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, that is correct. So, you know, this is where we are, but I am in favor of the rebate, but I just had to say that, make those points.
Well said. Well said.
Thank you.
Good point.
Okay, are we ready to vote on that?
This is a reminder and a clarification for anybody that needs to know and is watching. So this, this option that you're voting on is the option for the percentage option, what we've shared, which is, again, the seventeen point five percent option, and, you know, two examples are provided on the screen of that, but it will vary depending on the taxpayers. Just want to make sure everybody knew that is, that's the motion in the second before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, you call a roll, and each council member will have an option of voting yea or nay. All right, call a roll, ma'am.
Mr. Bestfitch?
No.
Mr. Cobb?
No.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
So, based on that, then, we're doing, going with scenario one, seventeen point five. All right, now we're down item number C. As hearing of citizens upon public matters, and I forgot your name, sir, but you can speak, we've already voted on the ordinance, but you can speak if you want to. I don't want you to say you were denied opportunity to talk.
Oh, no, I don't want to speak on that ordinance, I'm speaking on something else.
Well, you can have the floor, you can speak.
Okay, I, I want to make sure, I want to make sure. This is concerning five oh two Mapleton. I know that Tom's left, if I step over the station, I'll shoot you a little folder here. This will make you quite.
I can hand it to you, ma'am. I can do that.
There are pictures in here and the GIS, and what I'm having trouble with, what the whole neighborhood, there's a list of neighbors too, what we have trouble with is about six years ago, a lady moved into five oh two Mapleton named Tracy Brown, this man. About eighteen months after she moved in there, she left, and the Hanukkah gang moved in. There's nobody named Hanukkah on any of the lease or any of the agreements, and Ronnie Hanukkah, Donnie Hanukkah, Johnny Hanukkah, John, Taylor Hanukkah, they all live there. Ronnie Hanukkah and his friends live in the backyard, they use the bathroom in the backyard. It's at five oh two Mapleton, it's right behind the Spirit of Life Ministries. And it looks like a salvage yard in the back, you can see that from the GIS. I didn't have to take any illegal pictures. You can look in your folder there and see the GIS picture where it looks like a salvage yard. We have to call the police there about three times a week for fights, yelling, or we've had a couple of people that looked like they were passed out. The police came, the fire department came, apparently they were overdosed. We've had gun, gun activity there. There was a drive-by shooting because of the drug activity. And this is in what was considered a pretty nice neighborhood, I've lived there for twenty-one years, and we've, we've called everybody we can think, city code, the police, the fire. Who do you call? I don't know who to call, maybe you do, maybe you can help us with this. Maybe you can look at this folder that I've given you, these pictures, somebody can do something for us or help, and this is the whole neighborhood, you see a list of neighbors. There's a lady on there named Cindy Grossclose. She had to complain that they broke into her house. Well, when the police came, she had to stand in the street beside the police and tell them what happened and do the report, and as she did, the Hanukkah gang saw her. Once the police left, all they do now is threaten her. Every day, they yell at her, scream at her. She's so frightened that if she calls the police to tell someone that she's, that they're threatening her, she thinks they might shoot her. This is at five oh two Mapleton, it's right behind the Spirit of Life Ministries. It doesn't even, it looks so out of place. And I was here before when I signed up to come here, I said, please drive by there, put this on your GPS and drive by there. Do everybody a favor and see what this, one of these things just don't look like the other, and it's that house right there. All right? And here's the other thing, this is apparently why we can't, why we don't have any legal action. The people who live there aren't on the lease, and the person who does live there lives in Florida, there's nothing we can do about it. That's what everybody tells me, there's nothing we can do. Well, you know, that's according to the policy, and the policy comes from here, so there's got to be something we can do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's all. I appreciate you letting me talk to you.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, and we're going to forward this to the City Manager.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Oh, well, Ms. Price, I'm sorry.
What was his name?
Yes, the property has had utilities.
Perrin's Corners?
My name is Ronnie Blankenship.
Come back to the mic if you will, please.
Yeah, tell me his name again.
It's R O N N I E Blankenship, B L A N K E N S H I P. And as I'm responding to the City Manager, he said, do they currently have utilities? That's a good question, off and on, hit and miss, I'm not sure. And we do know this for sure, Cal Boone, he lives right, or his house is right beside mine at five oh one Lester, they were using his water hose to take a shower in the backyard. And they have verbally told the officer, yes, I live here in the backyard, yes, I sleep under this table. And the policeman said, well, where's your house, to Ronnie Hanukkah? He said, I live under this table. He said, where do you use the bathroom? He said, right here in this yard. And what surprises me is that that report was given to a police officer in Roanoke City, and nobody puts this together. Roanoke City Police doesn't talk to Roanoke City Code? I don't understand it. The fire department comes there, they're burning the kids' toys to stay warm in the winter. There's toxic fumes all over the neighborhood. The fire department doesn't say, hey, this, they say it's a fire hazard, but they don't tell anybody else? I don't, that's, that's something that I see, and it's been five years. It's not like I just put up with this a couple of months.
Yeah.
No, they've been there for quite a while, and it looks like it's only getting worse. The picture you see in your GIS is only about seventy percent of what it looks like now, that was eighteen months ago that that picture was taken. Eighteen, drive by there now. And you're like, it's just, it's surprising to me that the neighbors feel unsafe. I'm sorry about that.
No, you shouldn't have apologized.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
No, I didn't have a question, I just had a comment.
And Jill.
You got a question?
Well, I'm just going to express, thank you for coming. No, thank you for coming. I, I just want to express my frustration because what he's described, pick a place in the city, and we have these properties with the same scenarios, and I guess my question is, you know, we were just, Bill was talking about our legislative agenda earlier, do we need to have, I think we need more teeth in our code enforcement and enforcement in general with some of these properties? Because these are not scenarios, I, I think we try everything that we can with code enforcement, but when something goes on and on for five, six, seven years, and then neighbors start selling their houses and moving somewhere else because nothing is done.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out where the breakdown is, and if it's, if it's on the state law and state code, then we need to ask for that to be changed to give us more authority to do the things we need to do. So I'm just expressing my frustration at that, and it would help to have some guidance from code enforcement and even law enforcement about these kinds of properties so that we can know what we can do to better advocate for the people who live here.
Yeah, because what I'll do is I'll, I'll look more at this one. You know, on its surface, it sounds like a case where you've got a property owner that's not taking responsibility for their property, others have come onto their property, therefore trespassing. We, of course, only can enforce trespassing if the owner says they're trespassing. So the next, next piece of that is, okay, are there code violations on the property that we could take action against the owner? It's part of the reason why I was asking about the utilities, because if the home is being occupied without functioning utilities, there's some code issues we could do. So I, we'll, I'll look at this and see what pieces might make sense. And there may be a piece that we actually do need additional teeth, but we'll come back and talk about it all.
Well, let me, let me just say that over the years, we've had these issues come up. Let me just, maybe I can make this short. The property owners, and I guess you call them, well, the people that own these properties have probably got one of the most powerful lobbies you have in Richmond. And until we got to keep knocking on the door, we've done this, we've took in Richmond, matter of fact, our code enforcement has some issues, and they go in and try over the years, over the years, but there's so much that you can do because even when you go to court, it looks like the homeowner or the property owner, if he does certain things, nothing changes. You know, if he cuts the grass or does some things, then that may change, but I know we've, over the years, have approached that, even with our legislative agenda over the years, and we've got to keep doing that. So I agree with Councilman Cobb, and we have to, we got an opportunity to talk, we'll have an opportunity to talk with our representatives in Richmond about that. But it's just so frustrating because I know people in, the people that work in code enforcement want to take action, people, and they push that. I've been, not recently, but I've been down the years, they've been in there, and it's just, it's a, it's a tough hurdle to overcome, but we're going to keep doing it, we're going to work on that, and we want to assure you, not only that, but the public safety piece of it, it has to be, and we have to look at, but we've got to go back at it again because it's something that we hear all the time, and we got these abandoned houses and places and people, and I just hope that the, the, and we got homeless people in places, and that's another subject, and the HEP teams taking people food in places that are homeless, I mean, that are, that are not, that are abandoned. And so, that's, again, that's another subject, but you get complaints where people can't rent property or do anything because they got a lot of folks around. So that's a, that's a big issue, we aware of it, and we're going to work on that for you, sir. So thank you for coming down, ma'am.
Thank you. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, it looks like to me that concludes what we have for business today.
We may have one more speaker that has signed up. That is Patricia Cook. Is she here? No. Okay.
All right. Is that it?
That's it, yes.
Okay. All right, with there being no further business to come before the council, the council meeting is adjourned. the council meeting is adjourned.